Okay, we're recording. I'll put it out on Facebook as well for the people.
Eric, you know, people are able to mute and unmute themselves.
Um, okay, hang on. How's that? How did that happen?
I don't know, but I'm just hearing all the background noise and I decided to test it.
Okay, let me try this mute. Okay. Okay, the meeting is now being recorded. The meeting is now being streamed live on Facebook. Welcome everyone to Thursday, July 30th, 2020, special meeting of the Caramel Mountain Ranch Saber Springs Community Council. Let's do approval, approval of agenda. Can I just get in, let's see. I can see John. John, do you move to approve the agenda? Yes, John Schroeder moves to approve. I see Rich right next to John. How about a second? Second, thank you from Rich Kredji. All those in favor? I, Dan Thompson, I, John Schroeder, Rich Kredji, John Chu, Kurt Carlson. So that's, how many is that? Oh Silva, we got, I don't have Silva, Joe Valencia. Let's do it in the, let's do it in the chat, I guess. I'm trying to see everybody. It's impossible. Um, all right. Okay, Kurt Carlson, okay, Dan Thompson, yes. Mark Clark, yes. John Schroeder approve agenda. All right, the overwhelming approval of the agenda. So thank you. We've got, we've got the agenda approved. Um, okay, so then let's move to quickly introduction of board members. Let's see, is Esther here? Esther Berry? I don't see Esther. Okay, Esther Berry not present. Ryan Yamazaki is not present. Dan Thompson is present. And Dan Thompson occupies a business seat. John Chu I see is present. Homeowner, Rich Kredji is present. He's a homeowner in Caramel Mountain Ranch. John Schroeder is present. Caramel Mountain Ranch homeowner, Mark Clark is present. Caramel Mountain Ranch homeowner, Joe Valencia is present. Caramel Mountain Ranch homeowner. Kurt Carlson is present and he's a Caramel Mountain Ranch homeowner. I guess I'm introducing you guys for you. We're just gonna do this quick. Majid Mosherian is Caramel Mountain Ranch homeowner and let's see Silva. I'm gonna unmute them because I don't see them.
We are here.
Silva and Majid both here.
Yes.
Both Caramel Mountain Ranch homeowners. Thank you guys very much. So that is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. No, no, I'm sorry. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10 with me. Eric Edelman, present. So that's 10 of 13. So we have a quorum. So we're okay to have this discussion. So what we're here to talk about tonight, initially I scheduled this meeting because we had the planning commission hearing last week. And the planning commission voted to advance the Alonte development proposal to city council. And that city council meeting is going to take place in September. And initially, I was under the impression we had 10 business days to appeal that planning commission decision. However, after further research, it was determined that we cannot appeal that planning commission decision because it's, it's a recommendation to the city council and it's not a binding decision that changes any land use or zoning. And also this project is being run through the city under what they call the process five. And I'll let Brian explain that a little bit more. But basically, all that means to us is that there is no appeal. So our next step with this is to go before the city council in September. We don't yet have a firm date, but we know it's in September. So with that, I'm gonna unmute Brian Hollensworth and let him talk about where we are. Basically, what we're, we're gonna talk about here is what, what points we feel may have landed with the planning commission and which ones didn't and how we formulate our presentation to the city council in September. So with that, I'm gonna unmute Brian and, and hand it over to him.
All right. Good evening. There I am. Good evening, everybody. So one extra thing that you mentioned was the actual presentation. So I'm gonna bring that up here in just a second. So I can do a bunch of screen sharing. So let's get that prepared. I think it's this stack here. Yeah, here we go.
Oh, do you need me to make you host so you can share something?
Oh yeah, that'd be good.
Okay.
Okay, so let's get some stuff squared away here. Share, screen.
Wait.
Oh, I'm not, I'm gonna tend to you still.
Yeah, I know. I, yeah. Brian, okay, you're a host.
All right. All right, so. Make this bigger. There's a few different processes. Well, there's five different processes that a project can go through in order to get approved. So I'm trying to find, here we go. This is the, the development services review process. And so there's processes one through five, right, which depend upon what the impact is. And this, because it's requiring a community plan amendment, zoning redesignation, et cetera. It's under process five, which means there's no appeal box there. So the form that, you know, there's an appeal procedure here that was, you know, discussed. And if you actually read the fine print here, there is no city administrative appeal available for process five and sit five decisions, right? So this is at the city council, right, which is the next level that this is going to go through. So this form does not apply to this project. So that's, that's kind of where we're at as far as, you know, we scheduled this meeting in order to vote whether or not there should be an appeal and discuss what the points would be. But to Eric's, you know, comment earlier, after further review, it's not possible to file an appeal. So therefore, the only thing left is really to, to influence the city council who can't take a position because they're gonna ultimately be taking a vote on this. Even though, you know, probably have a pretty good idea of what their positions are. So we need to, we need to review the facts regarding this, the project as it's been proposed and what the key points are to why we recommended denying the project. And ultimately, all of the points that this, that the presentation here covered were all part of the land use policy. So if we look into this, this is actually a document available through the city's website. By the way, there's this whole community planning workshops. They have community orientation workshops here. So you can go to this website and learn for yourself what the different processes are. Obviously, it's a lot of material to retain. And if this is not your full-time job, it's easy to, to forget some of the details. Thus, you know, we thought we could appeal. So I'm gonna jump into the presentation, but before I forget, public comments at the city council meeting is going to be ran the same way as it was ran for the planning commission hearing. And that, you know, it will not be in person. There will be this phone-in testimony where there will be the non-agenda public comment, closed session public comment. And then as an agenda, right, comment on specific agenda items. It's the same thing with the web form and 200 words. So it'll be a similar process to what we went through with the planning commission. But obviously, a different decision-making body that is a binding decision. So what did we learn in the planning commission hearing? So let me make this a bit bigger. Okay, so these were the topics that I focused on in our presentation. There was a lot of talk from the, the community members about traffic as well, which I didn't really touch on in this presentation. And I kind of did that, you know, number one, for time, because I barely had enough time to read this like the Micro Machine Man, for those of you who remember. Read as fast as you can. But we also, you know, we know that, that the developer paid their traffic consultants to do a report that favored them. And we knew that the, that the planning commission honestly doesn't really care about traffic because they would like the suburbs to be just as congested as the, you know, as the areas closer to downtown. So pardon me for being on a soapbox. But what did resonate, what, what was called out specifically in the review comments by both the initiation hearing, the review cycle comments, there was a lot of talk about bulk and scale, which is the area that I think that we really need to focus on a lot in our messaging. So the recap for, I'm not gonna go through this slide by slide because I did blaze through this in, I think, 12 minutes. And honestly, I want to finish this up as fast as we can tonight and just kind of get the information out there. So this was the initial offerings. There were two buyers. One was willing to buy within the current zone and one was to buy with the potential for rezone. And they chose the one with the potential rezone. And in that commentary, this hearing, and this is where we could use some help from the community. This July 10th, 2018 hearing, I went back and watched the video. And there were some good conversations about, you know, that's gonna be challenging to get the zoning change. And if you don't get it, what are you willing to build? So Scott said, I'm willing to build five, even if I don't get the rezone. And I would do less than 45 with 33% being affordable. So that was comments to, to council member Alvarez. And then he also told council member Kersey that he believed that 45 units could be built within three stories, not four as is proposed. So at the end of the day, the, the city wants a building on this site. We want that building to not be as high. You know, 70 feet is, is unrealistic for this location. That's the height of the Miramesa buildings that you see right next to the freeway there. You know, this building is also right next to the freeway, does not fit with the topography, right? Miramesa's flat. This, this does not fit with the topography with the community plan or anything else. So, you know, they approved this resolution. The R311868, I think I got that number right. They basically said at least five units will be restricted, you know, with no rezone. And then if there is a rezone that depending upon what the level of rezone was, they could get additional five or additional five. So basically for a total of 15. And that was what was approved two years ago. So in January of 2019, you know, Scott came and presented to us and got a lot of pushback from the community of 70 feet does not belong in our neighborhood. And, you know, to, he heard that and he went back to the real estate department and said, can we change the resolution language to allow fewer units, you know, and then still have income restricted units? So the example that, that I was trying to highlight here is the 35 to 39 units could be built total and still have 11 income restricted units. And the, the point that a lot of the YIMBs were making on the call was completely out of line and not anywhere near what our argument has been. The, the city understands that, or the, the community understands that we need to have a variety of housing options. And, you know, we, we are not trying to be prejudiced against any particular, you know, income level or group. And we are more than welcome to have affordable units. We just want the total number of units to be reasonable. And, and this, this is a sliding scale that Scott had provided to the city. This was presented by, I think, Mary Carlson from Real Estate to Land Use and Housing Committee on February 6, 2019, and no action was taken. So basically, the, our hands were tied, or his hands were tied, that he's gonna do 45 or bust, or at least 45, which was a very important, at least, in a lot of the comments that you heard. So of course, we know that we ended up with 50. So I apologize for the Slack comment. Let me turn that off if you guys are hearing all that. So that was the situation. Then we, of course, had the initiation hearing, right, where we talked about that this, you know, that there were a lot of issues that were wrong with this, but it got approved anyway for initiation, which was not, still a non-binding approval of the overall project. And these bullet points are pulled straight off of Tony Kempden's slides, right, saying that these are the areas that need to be studied. The appropriate land use designations and zoning, right? I noted that there was the, the discrepancy about the actual land use versus the underlying zoning. The public services and facilities, right? That's traffic, fire, things of that nature. And then the bulk and scale in relationship to the existing development in the surrounding neighborhood, which basically is like, does a 70-foot building fit, belong right next door to Proven Call? And there were a lot of comments about the sore thumb or the finger to the community that, that ended up getting adjusted. And so, and to work in good faith. And as we know, when we had our September meeting, there was no good faith to be had. It was take, it's, this is the project, I have it from the highest level in the city that this is going to happen. So last week, we had our, the plan amendment hearing. And the, the criteria for that, also from the, the land use policies was, you know, level and diversity of community support, which obviously there were hundreds of comments with legitimate reasons why this project does not a fit for the location as proposed. The size and boundary, obviously. And we talked about city of villages, you know, we talked about all these different points. So the city of villages, this fell on deaf ears. That, that the proposed project site is in the southwest corner of the community and the town center is in the northeast corner of the community. So again, the, this is not Flat North Park. This is Hilli, Caramel Mountain Ranch. It is a different, it's a different style of living, right? We're not living in, in a mixed-use community. We're open to it, but, you know, put it in the town center. What you want to do mixed use where it makes sense, right? Let's be smart about this. This, they're not gonna leave it as what they call a derelict parking garage, even though it's derelict because of their lack of maintaining it. So neglect on the city's behalf should not be a reason for, you know, changing the land use designation. But again, deaf ears don't care. The community design element. So Caramel Mountain Ranch is on the list to have the community plan updated. I think we're like sixth or something. There's like a group of different plans that are being updated in the areas that have the most impact. So places like University City, Mission Valley, Kearney Mesa. Those are all being revised. Miramesa is being built up like crazy, the whole Carroll Canyon area. Those areas where there's more opportunity to do more development are going first. And places like us that are built out are near the end of the list, right, which is why our community plan hasn't been, you know, really updated since 1999. The community's been built out since the mid 90s. So this is still very important, right? The design compatibility and the transitional elements. And so it's still important to focus on this, right, because it is still a community plan. And we should fight for that, right? That, we, we have a unique geography or topology. And this is why, right? There is no height limit for the RM410, which is the zoning designation that they're looking to get, which allows like one dwelling unit for every 400 square feet or some ridiculously low number. But it is very high, right, relative to the surrounding building, which is like, it's an eight-foot, five to eight-foot setback from Proven Call to the building. It's, it's pretty darn close. So even if it's not directly in front of the window, that's still a significant block of what's gonna, what's gonna happen. And way higher than anything else out there. So our, you know, our, our proposal, if we were to be doing an appeal, but we're not, but our proposal to the council is going to be, look, he said he could do it in three floors and blend with the community, and that's what we're asking. And if there has to be fewer units, then adjust the resolution to allow fewer units, because the city is ultimately the ones who could change the resolution. These setbacks that were asked for were out, were variances because of the density. There's all these various bonus, bonus, let's say, variance bonuses. So basically, building out with zero setbacks was one of the things because of the density of the project. They don't care that, that that driveway serves 162 condo units and that they're all gonna be sharing that one little cul-de-sac. The, the planning commission doesn't care. The city council is unlikely to care either. I'm just being very blunt with you all because this is, it is what it is. The bulk and scale, as I called out earlier, it was called out by this, by, you know, Tony Kempden, Development Services, that it's something they would study. Right? So I showed this slide and said, look at that, right? It's, it's about 20 feet higher. I don't know the height of that building in Proven Call to give you the exact measurement, but it's very, it's a substantial differentiation between the two. And this comment that I had on there about the, the fortress-looking facade, right, that, that looks like basically a prison or a dorm room, right, that was straight out of the review cycle notes. And no amount of articulation and variance in windows and texture is going to change that. It was interesting that the call out here that half of the bicycle spots are out in the open. That, that was noted. So I was happy to hear that the commission, you know, actually did look at the presentation and listen to that comment. And I suspect that there's gonna be some sort of a cover that, that goes there. But, you know. My car. Um, so the last, the next comment here was just, you know, specifically like, look, we looked at the plans and whoever's gonna live there is gonna have a hard time because if you're gonna reduce the storage by 3.2 times the recommended or required storage, that means people are only gonna have 75 cubic foot locker above their car to store extra things. That's not a lot, especially if you're living in a 585 square foot apartment. We don't know which units are going to get, be designated as affordable or if that is gonna be floating. But, you know, that would be very unfortunate for somebody who's, you know, gonna get the, the short end of the stick here. The 16 of these units are gonna have small storage and 16 of these units are also very small. The fire grid thing, right, this, this just surprised me because literally the project in the morning that was approved before us was the Black Mountain Ranch, which, if you guys have looked at that project, Lennar is slowly chipping away at Black Mountain from the north side, building in habitat land and the protected habitat land, open space, it was AR11, MHTBE or whatever it's called, and verify higher risk. And they're still willing to build homes that start, you know, around one and a half million dollars because, you know, we need a variety of housing around here that are offset by the town center in Forest Ranch, which is where the affordable units go. So the city is still more than willing to build in very high fire risk areas despite what insurance companies are doing to people. So that's that. And then the bus route thing. So I wrote the letter reading one document that said that, you know, you need to have two bus routes at least every 15 minutes during peak time. That's what, there's a, a diagram that states the state bill. And and so that, sorry. Let me turn off Slack because it is just driving me nuts. Okay, I'm gonna fire drill at work happening. So, um, yeah, so the deal is, is that you need to have two bus stops running. And they should be going like east, west, north, south every 15 minutes. Well, there was an amendment that was passed at the beginning of this year that says that just one rapid bus route is enough to consider a transit stop to be a major, sorry, to consider a transit center to be a major transit stop. That is a ridiculous designation that one bus that runs every 15 minutes, that's probably empty most of the time, is good enough to allow 70-foot towers to go up in the communities. So again, things don't match reality. But they don't care because that's what the law is. So the outcomes were keep it a parking garage. We knew that wasn't gonna happen. So at least recommend that, hey, we should make this building more in line, like adjust the bulk and, and scale issue. Make it less fortress-like where the two main areas. Again, they don't care about parking. Let, let the residents fight it out and complain amongst each other and get towed. So again, it's gonna be miserable for the people living there. And, and so it is what it is. So that's me venting about what happened. And enjoy it all that on the public record for anybody who listens to this. We stuck to the, the facts of the land use designation and we made our arguments. So what's left is bulk and scale, 70 feet does not fit. And we need to drive home the message that the sliding scale should be a viable alternative. We can still accommodate affordable units, definitely, you know, all for, for, for variety of housing. Between 35 and 39, the way I calculate this is if you take off the fourth floor, you can be at 38 units. If you take off the additional three end units that are in, actually, I think I have the, do I have that plan here? I have. Well, I can show it in this view. So in this view, if you take off this fourth floor, I believe that's 12 units. And then, of course, that would take off this as well. And then you take off these three units here, which are very awkward in the floor plan. You take away your, your, basically your arrow slots, right, for your prison guards. And, and you, so that brings the total down to 35 total units. And then these people at the end units would actually, you know, if these end units would have window and you can put the escape stairs down that side. That would be a more, a better transition between communities where we go from, you know, we would drop what 12, 10 or 12 feet off the top, right? So now we're talking about a 60-foot building against a, whatever this building is over here. It's a slightly better transition. It will alleviate the parking concerns because now we would have 58 parking spots for 35 units. So those people in two-bedroom units can actually have two cars. It would alleviate the, the bicycle situation because all the bicycles could be put underneath, same with the motorcycles. So there's a lot of benefits to reducing the bulk and scale to not only the surrounding community, but also to the future residents of this building. And that's the point that, that I'd like to drive home because I think that, you know, that sliding scale was presented by Scott himself as something that was viable. He told the city that he could do it in three. The city wants more, right? The city always wants more, but let's be reasonable here. And that's the argument that I think that we should make. So with that, I'm gonna stop and I'll, I'll leave the slides up, but that, that's where we're at.
Can you, huh, I wonder if, do you need to leave the slides up?
No, I can stop sharing.
Can you turn the hosting back over to me? Is that possible?
Absolutely.
I don't seem to be able to grab it from you, not that I, you know.
You got it. And I'm gonna keep myself off of mute in case somebody has a question because once I mute myself, I can't unmute.
Yeah, please, please leave yourself unmuted. If we need you to share that again, we certainly will. So we're gonna go, we're gonna go through board comments. we're going to go through board comments on, on what Brian just shared here real fast. And then, you know, there will be a public comment. We, we're not going to be commenting on federal housing policy tonight. It's just not part of this discussion and it has nothing to do with, with the proposal before the city. So we, we, we won't be hearing those, those comments, but anybody that has a comment on this specific proposal that's before the city that isn't on the board, you'll be given an opportunity to make your comment or I'll read your comment that's in the chat. First, though, we are going to get to board, board member, board member comments. And so I'm going to, did Esther come in? I don't see Esther. Okay. Dan, I'm going to unmute you in case you have anything to add or ask.
Ask or add, you know, the, I'm just going to go back to when I thought, I, I felt that the people who called in and actually then some of the planning commissioners, it was very disappointing to hear them, you know, use the, I, I, I'm just going to say the, I'm, I'm going to say racist comments that we're, we're unwilling to have people come into our neighborhood. To me, that listening to them and the people calling in from the phones was very insulting to us as, as a neighborhood. And I don't know if you can say anything to that effect, bringing it up ahead of time because obviously you don't want to be doing that. But maybe some, I don't, and obviously the format doesn't allow, when Brian called back in to try and rebut, they just shut his butt down.
Well, that's, and that's one of the purposes for meeting here tonight because we want to impress on board members and also community members because I do see some comments that we need, we need more people calling into the city council and called into the planning commission. More isn't necessarily better. What we need to do is steer clear of the the buzzwords that the, you know, for instance, the YIMBs were, were keying in on to, to accuse us of those, those, those things. And, and if anybody was at the hearing, I mean, I, I, I was also offended by that. But there are certain things that we as a community need to avoid in objecting to the project. And people as individuals are, are welcome to call and say whatever they want. But if we want to make an effective and potentially impactful presentation to the city council, we need to do everything that we possibly can to avoid being able to be accused of being exclusionary, being, I don't, I don't, I mean racist. That was, it was, yes, it was, it was terrible the way that they, they painted us. And we just need to avoid those topics. And that's the, the purpose of the meeting tonight is to look at what, what can we talk about? How we, how can we be effective? And so, and also, well, I don't really want to get into the debate of, you know, low income versus affordable. These, we're not talking about low-income housing units here. We're talking about affordable units. Brian, what, what's the, it's sixty to eighty percent of average median income? Is that how they?
No, I think, did I get that on my footnote? Well, the foot, it's, it's sixty, eighty and one-twenty. So it's five at sixty percent, five at eighty percent and five at one hundred and twenty percent.
Of what?
And I don't see the footnote here, but I think, maybe it's here. I think, I think it's like seventy-eight or eighty thousand or something like that a year.
Right.
Is the median income.
So we're not, we're not talking about low-income housing here. We're talking about people who make, you know, sixty to eighty percent of what the average is. Is that right, Brian?
Yeah, it's, it's whatever that number is. And I think it's, I want to say, I'll just round it and say it's like eighty thousand.
Right.
Not that, you know, housing is housing, but there's a difference between like publicly funded housing, right? And then this is a private development that has some deed restricted units, right? So the, the building itself is, you know, there's a blend. So essentially, you know, some of the people are paying higher rent to subsidize the others, right? Within the buildings, the reality of business. But, you know, it's, that's just, that's, that's good, right? To, to allow people to live in a nice place and have some level of control over what their housing cost is.
Right. Yeah. So I mean, when, when we talked to the city council as a board, I mean, and we've already, we learned this before the planning commission hearing that, you know, we're not, we're not here to oppose workforce housing, affordable housing, whatever you want to call it. But again, we, we learned that lesson, but what we didn't learn was that some of the things that we're saying are actually things that these that these YIMBs for whatever, you know, that we're, we're queuing in on. Anyway, I don't want to, I'm not on a soapbox about this. I'm just trying to explain where we are. And John Chu is next on my roster and I'm going to unmute him in case he has anything to add. John, are you there? Oh, no, your microphone again.
No, you sound like a chipmunk, John.
It's, I don't know what happens, I don't know what happens there. John, I'm going to, sometimes when we mute you and come back to you, it works. So we'll, we'll come back to you. Rich, I'm going to find you. Rich, 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 rich. Mr. Kredji.
Yes. So there was a lot of kind of canned, prepared statements about saying that we just, you know, want to restrict you know, people from coming to our neighborhood for deed restricted or low income or affordable, whatever term they're using. They were saying, we don't want that. And so I think what would make our argument for a reduced structure kind of more, maybe more powerful and diffuse all of that if we just said, hey, we're fine, you know, make them all, make them all affordable. And let's just reduce the size and make them all affordable. And, and it kind of diffuses that, that, that canned BS argument that it's just, you know, all of this hours and hours of research we did is only based off of us not wanting people in our, our neighborhood, which was absolutely ridiculous. I mean, our neighborhood's more diverse than their planning commission. So.
Yeah, yeah, this, yeah, this, this board is more diverse than the planning commission. That's, that's for sure.
I wanted to suggest, I think if we just suggest, hey, we want, our thing is reducing it. And if you want more affordable housing in there, make it all affordable housing. I mean, we don't care about that part. We, we want, we want that, that structure smaller.
Right. Okay, um, thank you, Rich. John Schroeder. Are you there?
Yeah, yeah, I'm here. Yeah, Brian, first of all, thanks for all your work. And I thought you did a really good job at the planning commission, really, really clear, good pace, easy to understand. I mean, I thought you got our message across. Well, maybe they didn't receive it or they chose not to, to hear it. But I think you did a really wonderful job. So thanks for that. And, you know, I found it interesting after the public comments, when the commissioners were having their own discussion. A lot of them, most of them, they voiced some concerns. They said, well, I'm concerned about this or, or that, or whatever it was. You know, they acknowledged some things, but then they appeared to just dismiss those concerns that they had and go to approve the project as is. So I was a little bit puzzled, puzzled by that. But anyway, regarding your, your discussion tonight, Brian, I, I think it makes sense. You know, I, I like, I like the, you know, you're talking about reducing the number of, you know, taking a floor off or using it to thirty, thirty-five units. And I like the way we're talking not only about reducing the bulk and scale, but the bicycles, the motorcycles, the parking for the two-bedroom units. I, I think, I like the way you, you show multiple benefits by taking the floor off, not just reducing the bulk and scale, but, you know, four or five different benefits. I think, I think that's really good. One question I had, I've got that table that we referred to that Scott Sandstrom put together, you know, with the sliding scale table. And his, you know, he, he noted that he could even do twenty to twenty-four units and provide five affordable units that way. So that would be two floors, but you know, maybe your read and maybe kind of my read too. I don't know. Maybe, maybe, what you're thinking on that, Brian, do you think that that just won't fly?
I would love that, but I think that we have to strike the balance, right? You know, there's some people who just want, you know, twenty floors, right? Like, you know, there's the shadow over Balboa Park, right? And then there's, you know, there, there's got to be a balance here. So all, all those buildings that were shown as examples of, you know, four floors and up were from Carmel Valley. So, you know, there's nothing in this immediate community like that, you know, residential buildings in that vicinity that are, that are like this. And that's been the, from the very beginning, it's been about a seventy-foot tower that doesn't belong there. That's, that's, that's the issue.
Yeah. I, I guess I'm just thinking, you know, that if we, you know, twenty to take two floors off, twenty to twenty-four, it could still be a profitable project, but.
Totally agree.
Yeah, but I.
The trade-off is five units versus eleven, you know, income restricted, and that's, that's the goal. So I think it's a good compromise.
What, what's a good compromise? The, the one floor off the top?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I, 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 I think it's a reasonable proposal. And I think it's strong too. I think it would be a strong argument for the city council.
And it's what was told the council two years ago to get the approval for the resolution.
Yeah. So those are my comments. So I, yeah, I think it's a strong argument.
Thank you, John. Mark Clark, I'm, I'm assuming you're on Mark's. I, there you are. Yep.
That's me. All right, good. Yeah. So I, one, I like the previous comment and I don't think we should just ignore it with regards to, you know, focusing on the fact of like, hey, look, we, we're actually so in favor of affordable housing. We're going to challenge the builder to make every single unit affordable. I, I really like that tactic. It doesn't matter like if he'd ever will or whatever, like that really calls him to the carpet and it really diffuses that argument against us because we aren't against affordable housing at all. And so I think that needs to be something, you want to diffuse their, your, your opponent's argument as much as you can when you're in a debate, right? Debate. So I really like that idea and I think we should highly consider making that our stance. Because again, if you look, if you actually look at what affordable housing is, these are your policemen, you know, your single policemen, firefighters, nurses, you know, dental hygienists, you know, admin worker, right? So awesome. Bring them. We want them in this community. Great. Thank you. Please bring them. So I think, you know, that would be one of my thing. I don't know how much the conversation about like the, the, the parking and, you know, how people can walk and this and that. If, if that's something that we want to bring up again, you know, I always believe that I'm a sales guy. So I believe I've been telling the story so that people can actually see themselves in the story. And if we wanted to tell that story about like, you know, how far away it is and this and that in terms of somebody like walking to go get their or whatever, or the distance they would have to take a bus. So like, you know, how far they'd have to walk, get a bus, go up to Rancher Bernardo, right? Come, you know, go back down to the store, get, get a bus back and all that. You know, maybe you could tell that story in and around the city council offices, right? So if you can get a distance and say, hey, imagine you're at the city council office and that's where you live, right? And you want to go get some groceries, you would have to walk to, right, the Embarcadero or the Hornblower, you know what I'm saying? And like, put it in context that they really truly understand to try to make it a little bit more human to them. Because I doubt any of those people live in our neighborhood. And so you say, oh yeah, you have to walk a mile or whatever. So it's like, oh, well, you know, I used to, I used to run two miles when I was a kid or whatever, right? And so I, I believe that we should try to put it in context that people can really put themselves in, in the story. Again, not that that's going to matter, but, you know, it does, you know, kind of let them not hide behind BS as much. So those are my only comments.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, so Michelle isn't here. Joe Valencia, I saw, let me find him. Joe, I sent you an unmute request. Joe, are you there? Joe, you're unmuted. Can anybody see Joe? I don't see Joe. I don't hear him. Well, now he's muted again.
Get the game on.
Joe?
No, not at all.
Okay, um, Joe? All right. Joe might not be there right now. Kurt, Kurt's up next. Let me find him. Kurt? There you go.
All right. So I, I, a lot, I agree with a lot of what's been said tonight. I am still sort of struggling with what happened last week. I was like depressed for two days. And, you know, I didn't even know what it was at first. And I felt like, you know, when I started thinking about it, I, I realized that, you know, when you do everything you can that makes sense and, and yet it's like we weren't even given a stop at even trying to understand. And I'm assuming that they read Brian's letter or got a copy of the proposal, the presentation. Is that, or am I wrong about that?
No, that's right.
I'm, I kind of, I know a couple of people on the board. I know the Lansgate Park attached council, Suji, and I know, I know Doug Austin. I know those guys pretty well. And, you know, there seems to be a unified effort to go along with what the city is wanting, what the mayor is wanting. That to me is, you know, just sounds kind of, you know, a hopeless feeling. And yet I have never won to give up. I was also disappointed about some of the comments like the way Dan suggested. I was, you know, calling us racist and affluent. People that are trying to keep out, you know, protect their community. And I just, I just couldn't believe that that was even, you know, they're making something an issue that wasn't even a consideration in our heads and hearts while we went through this whole project. I never heard anybody ever say something like that. So I, I think, I agree that what we need to do going in there is simplify what was shown at the planning commission, obviously focus on the stronger points. Brian, I think you, you nailed it on the head. We need to say right up front, the elements that we agree with. You know, whether it's, if it is three stories, personally, I don't think it should say three. I think you should, you should say two to three. And even use that sliding scale thing to kind of show it because, and I'll tell you why. You have the Trails project coming forward. Anything that we agree to or set the table for now is setting what's going to be coming, they're going to expect the same thing coming from us next time. And so why is the Trails different from a Lock Day? Could be a point that they might bring up. But, you know, say the things that we want is more parking for that project, where the structure is more closer to the neighborhood, vernacular. You know, there's a balance for the community. I think that's, you know, a good thing. I was really shocked that they ignored their own comments. They, in fact, they made their comments, the planning commission made their comments to be really like, almost like one sentence and that was it. They didn't even you know, go down the rabbit hole on any of those comments, except for maybe Commissioner Hoffman, who I felt like he was sort of on the fence on some of the things. He didn't like the grading and wasn't, he wanted an economic, socioeconomic finding for affordable housing. You know, and I like the idea of just saying, you know, diffuse the whole thing and just say, make the whole thing affordable housing. Because, you know, really, yeah, that would be fine. I think that's, let them do that. But, you know, the fact is, this is all about money. So that we know that there's no way that the developer is going to do that. So anyway, I just, I feel like, you know, obvious that the attendance that we need to show at the city council meeting needs to be really brought up from what we had before. But keep in mind, we're up against the pro-development forces. It's going to happen. VIH will be having a, will be pretty much facing the same audience and the same name-calling things that we have faced in before. But I think if we go in and nip it in the bud right off the front and saying that, you know, here's what we will, what we, we like about this project, here's what we would agree to. here's what we would agree to, and then come back, Brian, with your comments about it. But I do think that there was a lot of information jammed in 10 minutes. And in some ways, it might have lost the message in some, in some ways. Because not everybody on that planning commission board is sophisticated enough in terms of design to know really what's going on, other than that they're rubbing shoulders with the guy next door, who is an architect, who is a landscape architect, who is a developer. You know, Vicky Granowitz, I don't, I had no comment for, I knew that was coming from her. You know, hey, get used to it, I had an idea with this in my backyard all day long. Unbelievable. That's my comment.
So to answer your earlier comment, yes, the letter, or the presentation was sent to Xavier Tuesday, so that they had a chance to circulate with the commissioners ahead of time. They had a ton of comments, or sorry, a ton of content to review. You know, our, our letter that we sent, like, I forget when that was sent out, but that was part of the staff report, like, on page 104, right, out of like a 200-page packet. But then the presentation was there, so they should have had a chance to review it. Whether they, you know, did or didn't, I don't know. You know, we know that the night before, that there was a packet that they got in regards to some of the, the park, the In Loue Park fees. And there's so much content floating around this project that we did not get a chance to see, right? Because the, you know, the, especially with COVID, now, nobody can go in person to see things. We didn't get digital copies of, still don't have digital copies of some of the review cycle notes. So there's a lot of stuff that we didn't have in order to go through this process. It's been very, very one-sided. We've done our best to stick to the land use development policies and to these points, you know, and the circumstances we have.
I have one more thing to add. Okay, Eric?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, you know, the frustrating part of this type of meeting setup is that it's very hard to, you know, like, spend someone else's time, you know, we, and, and I was very frustrated that they took a minute away from us. We originally had three minutes, and they knocked it down to two, which really ticked me off because I had so a minute of content that I wanted to talk about, and I'm sure the rest of you had that, so that was very frustrating. But I had a, another community planning commission meeting with City of Oceanside this week on another project. And what our team decided to do was form, do a Zoom meeting, right? We all sign up, we got there 15 minutes early. And then what we did is we communicated through chat. And so that we keep it, you know, that, it was, you could keep it to your own team, is what we did. And then we were able to just communicate so that we, when certain issues came up and somebody was talking, you could say, hey, you know, hey, Brian, John's got something to say about grading. And maybe we, you know, or, or, hey, John's, John, John says, hey, Rick's got something to say about greenhouse gases. And it worked really well, it kind of helped communicate through the process of what's not being said. And that's just a suggestion that we could do for the city council meeting. But anyway, that was just a, just a thought, to try to battle that frustration in terms of how to, you know, fumble through this, this awkward COVID era that we're going through. Because they're using it to their advantage. They're manipulating, they're manipulating the whole spiel of how to communicate back and forth. And they're, they're cutting us off at key points, and, you know, it could even do it technology-wise for all I, for all we know.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you, Kurt. Silva and Majid, do you have any comments on?
I, I, first of all, I want to thank Brian for the wonderful presentation. The whole thing was absolutely awesome. I'm sorry that they, I don't know what happened there. I was so upset after the meeting, I, it had to take me a couple of days to get back and, and just think of what happened. I, I still don't realize how the fire department, the traffic, everything came to their favor. One question I wanted to ask them, and I tried to get in, but I couldn't, was if this, this study was done before COVID or after COVID, during COVID, the traffic study and all those studies that they did. But I, I agree, Rich, I think is, had a great point. We should go back and tell them, you know, we are actually want all, all the units to be, you know, low-income housing, affordable housing, you know, we are not opposed of people coming to this neighborhood. We just don't think the building does satisfy the Carmel Montreuil Ranch, you know, original plan. But that's what I have to say, Brian, if you need any help, please let me know. You, you're just awesome, just great, great presentation.
Thanks.
I agree, too. Yeah, we, I think that we should just, we shouldn't say that we are not again as affordable. Just saying that let's make, make all the 34 units affordable. So I guess that I agree with everybody else so far.
That would certainly be an interesting, interesting position to take, and interesting to see how they would react to, to that. If any, I put the link, Channel 10 interviewed me, it was on TV this morning. And I think, again, this evening, I put the link in the chat. And that is one of the points that I actually was able to, yeah, somebody's texting me right now, a friend saying, I saw you on the news. It's one of the points I was able to get into the very few seconds I was on screen is why not make all of these affordable units? You know, we could have a whole building full of nurses, hygienists, police officers, firefighters, et cetera, like, like people have said, teachers. So I, I think that would be an interesting, an interesting argument to make. Okay, so we've, we've run through all the board comments here. And, and of course, yes, everybody, several people are mentioning, they forgot to thank you, Brian, in their comments, and I think that, you know, we, we all, we all definitely thank you. And the community owes you a debt of gratitude for all the work that you've done and continue to do on this issue. So that is something, something that we all, all share in common. So, can we try? Oh, John Chu wants me to come back to him. Okay, yeah, yeah, let me try. John?
Still working or not?
There you are, yes, yes, you sound normal.
So I locked down, locked back in, so maybe that might be the problem.
Okay.
Yeah, generally, I agree with what Brian said. I think, you know, the only real argument we have is bulk and scale. In regard to affordability, yeah, we should, we should definitely state that, hey, we are for affordable housing. We are also for, you know, even the golf course, right? We already wrote a letter saying we are susceptible to units on the golf course. So we should definitely show that this, this board or this group is not opposed to additional housing or affordable housing in the city. So I think that's a very clear argument, it kind of shuts down the MBs. We often, we can also talk about diversity of the board very briefly, if that ever comes up. And I kind of disagree with Brian on the, on the TPA portion. I think the, the city has kind of defined this TPA for a reason, and they are okay with development around the TPA. So I'm not really sure, I mean, that, you know, the bus routes aren't currently there. Because at the moment, you know, the requirement is zero parking, but they have the parking spaces identified. So I'm not really sure that argument works in this case.
Yeah, I think that argument's dead, we're going to focus on bulk and scale.
And, you know, I know, you know, some people want two floors or three floors. And I'm, I'm, I think one of our arguments should be, you know, that it should align with slope behind it, right? So whether it's two fours, three fours, or whatever, that it should have a, you know, slope to the, or angle to, to offset to the, to match the slope behind the building. So that would help kind of match the terrain that comes with the property. Other than that, I think, you know, those, those arguments kind of work pretty well. I'm not surprised at the outcome. I think at the moment, between the city and planners, they are pro-development. And, but at the same time, we have to play into the game, right? So we have to be supportive of these initiatives that are happening. Otherwise, we're going to get run over by all these other groups. All right, thank you.
Thank you, John, I agree. Um, okay, so public, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, let's see. So if there's anybody on the line, a public, member of the public who wants to actually be unmuted and make a comment, you can raise your virtual hand in Zoom, please. Or if you don't know how to do that, type it in the chat, and someone will see it and yell at me. I can't see all of you on the screen at the same time, but I do want to give public a chance to weigh in if, if anybody wishes to. I'm going to scroll through the chat to see if, what do the Trails have proposed for that hole behind Alonte? Does anybody know off the top of their head what's proposed on the old fairway behind Alonte with regard to the Trails, I believe some housing back there, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so they're, they're proposing housing back there, Dan. On, on old, it's what they call Unit Six. Anyway, I'm looking, I'm looking through the chat. So I mean, if anybody that's not on the board has anything on this that hasn't been addressed, please, please signify now, because we are nearing the end of our time together this evening.
Eric, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Mark.
Yes.
So what is, so it feels like we didn't really get hurt much, right? And so we're going to try to change tactics a little bit, right? When we go to the city council. I think the key thing is, we've really got to emphasize again and again and again, you know, we're, we're not anti-development, we're development, smart development, right? And this is not smart development, this is greedy development, this is unhinged development. I don't know where, Brian, where you got the designs, probably from the builder. If there's any way whatsoever, we can get designs that actually have a different angle, right? Because obviously, a top-down angle does them more justice than a bottom-up angle. The, you know, a couple of those pictures, you know, to be completely frank, don't look horrible. I mean, when you, when you put it into perspective, Brian, that these things will be as tall as those monstrosities next to Levarde, wow, I didn't even think about that, but that's a, that's a great visual. And that, that just doesn't fit our community, that's just crazy. So my question, I guess, really, Eric, is, let's say we get railroaded again, and we really aren't listened to, because I think we're, I think we're trying to be reasonable. I really truly believe it. And we don't get paid for this, right? The developer is going to get paid if this project goes through, millions of dollars. City council members, this is their job, they get paid to do this. We're all volunteers, Brian spent a crap load of time, God bless him, thank you, Brian. And so have all of us spent time and energy on this because we care about our community. And we're not against development, we're pro-development, but it's really frustrating to feel like all the time, energy, and effort has been for not, if we're not even listened to. So I guess my question would be, what is our next recourse? If we go to city council and they just railroad us and they just pass it through? Is there, what would be the next step? I'm just curious.
For, as far as I know, and what Brian and I have been able to determine, the next step for the board is, I mean, the, the board at that point is done. I mean, the public, the members of, I mean, I've heard all sorts of other, you know, proposals floated by people who aren't on the board, you know, lawsuits. I've, I heard somebody talking about potentially seceding from the city of San Diego. You know, that, that.
But our job would be done, because.
Yes, unfortunately, yes, as, as the planning group here, our, 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 our efforts are exhausted after the city council is done. So, yeah, that's, that's where we're, this is our, our last stand, so to speak. Yes, I do have, I have a raised hand from a community member, so I'm going to allow that public comment for two minutes. And then we'll, if nobody else is, if nobody else is going to make a comment at that point, then we'll probably conclude. But I'm going to unmute, it just says AK, AK, act, act, I guess.
I'm using, I'm using my daughter's iPad.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. Please state your name for us.
Veronica Villegas.
Thank you.
Yeah, homeowner. So I've been listening to your incredible content, and I can't thank you guys enough for, for championing this. But as a homeowner, is there, what do you guys need from us? I mean, you, you kind of have everything laid out, you're taking a lot of the homeowners' opinions into consideration, you have put a tremendous amount of, you know, tireless hours into this. As a homeowner, I'm watching this and I'm hearing everything that you guys are saying, and I feel a little bit helpless, and I don't know if, is there anything that homeowners can do that are not on the board, or do we just, do we need more activity from homeowners? You know, just kind of guide us, because we're sitting here literally muted, and while you guys have your discussion, and, you know, I don't know what to do other than just listen.
Eric, let me just post this in the chat right now. So what you can do is file a public comment, is at the bare minimum. So I just put the link in there for the, the council agenda minutes results link. And at the top of that page, it explains what the process is for accessing council meetings and public comment. And so make your voice heard, right? The, the community planning, I'm sorry, I'm speaking on Eric's behalf here.
That's okay.
The, the community planning group's role in this is to review the, the plans against the, the land use development guidelines and the community plan guidelines, and make the recommendation to the planning commission. Now, the planning commission has ignored that and made their own recommendation. And so we're going to make that reheard by the city council. Private members are, you know, the community definitely need to have voices heard for whatever comments you want to make. There were, you know, I think there were at least two petitions that were circulated by the, the community. These are things that are completely outside of what the community planning group does, right? I think 75% of Proven Call signed it, right, because they're directly impacted by this. And then there were over 900 signatures on another petition about this. But, you know, the petitions were ignored. So, you know, Kersey is terming out, so that, you know, the elections are the elections. But it, it helps to talk to not just, you know, Kersey, it helps to talk to the other council members, educate them about what this community is, what this project location is. You can request time to speak with a council member. And I think earlier, wasn't there a comment, the, the guy who supports Kersey might be on the line? There is, might be Mark Schaefer, is that?
Yeah, Mark, Mark Schaefer is here, I can, I can unmute him if you have a question for him.
If he wants to explain the process of how to request a meeting with a council member, understanding the council member can't take a position, but they should at least listen to the community feedback. Hopefully, I've given him enough notice.
Yeah.
Mark? You're muffled.
Oh, hold on one second.
There, it's a little better.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, so at this point, what you guys can have option do is, is contacting each of the council offices, their scheduler, and ask to schedule a meeting to meet with that council member or their land use person, whoever their policy advisor is, if. Speak to them and then just express what the planning group has said. That, that is everyone's right to petition their government, in a way. And they're all going to not give you a yay or nay to you, obviously, because the, the council meeting is basically like a final judicial trial for the project, where they, they have to come in with, quote, an open mind on what's being presented. So now's the time, if you guys want to organize something, just to explain the planning group's position to them, you contact their scheduler and, and see if they will meet. And don't say no to a staffer if they give you a staffer, too, because they're often the person that advises the council member.
Yeah, so I noticed that, was it Veronica? I think she's muted again, but maybe if in the chat you want to type to that, answer your question.
She.
Might be hard to type on an iPad.
Yeah, she must have muted herself, I'll unmute her real quick and we'll ask.
Yes, thank, all good, thanks.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I'm, I'm. I'm, I'm putting my email address in the chat here because I don't, I don't know if you are Veronica, but if you're not on my email list, you can grab my email there and email me and I'll put you on. And so all these links and stuff that get shared in here will get disseminated again by me to everybody. So you can, you know, know how to get in there and, and file that web form to make a comment at the city council meeting. And Mark Schaefer, are you still there?
Yes.
Okay, so if I understood you correctly, we can submit material to the city council prior to the, the meeting?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, that, that, do you hear me?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, just, you can contact each of the council offices since now it's going to be before the whole council and express your, what, what you've come, kind of your presentation and your key points and express that to them. And anybody can now, I mean, now's, now would be where anybody who wants to write them a letter or such or phone them can, can express their opinion. And all of that will be considered as, once they finally have their final hearing.
Thank you. So Jacqueline Aussie is asking me, should, should the rebuttal option be posted to Nextdoor so the greater CMR is aware, they can have a voice before this? Yes, Mark, can we, can we email the city council? Is that?
Yeah, yeah, each of, each of the offices have a different, I would go to the website for the city. And you, you can, you have a contact for each office that you can send that, that information or request or anything like that.
Right, and I will point out to everyone on the call, because I'm, I'm being asked to resend a list of city council contacts again. I mean, I can do that, but folks, it's sandiego.gov.
I'll give you, I'll give you, it's sandiego.gov and scroll down to the bottom of the page and it has the list of the officials and their sites.
Yes, it's, it's all, all of this stuff that we're talking about, pretty much everything that we talked about, people to contact and, you know, where all these rules about process five. And all of this stuff is on the, on the city's website. It's a big website and the planning, planning commission is there too. It's, it's all there. And then as far as getting our position or our, to get, to get this out on Nextdoor, I mean, certainly the, the, the meeting, the meeting has been publicized. And, and yes, I mean, we'll, we'll post a, I, I always, monthly, there's an update on Nextdoor. And, you know, so people will be made aware that they can, they can petition the city council prior to the, the meeting in September. We have a few weeks here to get it together and, and we definitely plan to use that time to do what we can. So I don't see any other raised hands and I don't see other, I mean, there's, there's a lot of comments and, and I, I don't know that I need to go back through and, and read them all, because everybody can see them. So unless anybody feels that there's something that's been left out here, somebody that's not been heard, I'm gonna move that we adjourn this, this. As a community, we can't, I, I don't know, the, the community planning group cannot file a lawsuit. We, the CMRS SEC cannot file a lawsuit. Anybody in the community can do whatever they want. You guys can organize however you want, but as a planning board, that is not an avenue available to us or even something that we can really entertain a discussion about. It's just not within our, our scope or our bylaws to be able to do anything like that. So we.
Before you close, I did post a link in there. Somebody asked, you know, to see the different views of the plan of the project. So I posted the link to the documents for the planning commission. And sort of the July page, look for Alontae and you'll see the 200-page document. And the plans are in there and that's where I grabbed the, the images from.
I'll go through this chat. I mean, everything gets saved. I'll go through the chat and email out all the links too. I mean, all, all of this stuff, you know, and if, at worst-case scenario, email me and I'll make sure you get what you're looking for. We want everybody to have everything that's available to them. So, I mean, it's, it's a little weird with a special meeting. I'm not sure, I think, let's, let me see if I can get a, I have a motion to adjourn. Dan Thompson motions to adjourn. PQ Group hired their own expert for 3,000, it was, well, we're, Kurt Carlson seconds. I, I will have to ask the, John over there at the PQ Planning Group what they did with regard to.
That was not, that was not the community planning group.
Thank you, I didn't think so.
Who did that.
Yeah, we, we don't have $3,000 to hire a, to, well, it's, it's not a planning board, not a community planning group. All right, so we have a motion and a second and a bunch of agrees to adjourn the meeting. So we're going to do that now. This is not, this is not the last time that we're going to talk about this. We're going to be second Wednesday in August with the regular meeting. And then if there is any other special meeting requirements between then and the city council meeting, we'll, we'll have them. That's the one advantage that we have here in the COVID world is that we don't need the library. We don't need the rec center. All we need is Zoom and my internet to work. And we can have a meeting just about anytime we, we want. So with that, I want to thank you all for being here and all of your messages of support. And we appreciate you all for coming and listening, listening to our meeting tonight. And with that, I'm going to adjourn. So I'm going to stop the recording now.